Nothing unless you.
Hello, city of Kingsbury.
Here we go.
Ring the bell of the triangle.
All right.
We're live.
So we are live. So. Oh, you have a mission statement here. Okay. Uh. So I don't know.
I think.
What do you think? You don't like it?
No, I like it. I just noticed it was there and I'm like, oh. So are we reading that in?
Uh, I don't know. I, uh, it was suggested.
I don't, I don't feel like we need to read it, but it wouldn't be a bad thing if we did.
Well, we have here the Kingsbury Mission Statement. The mission of the city of Kingsbury is to protect the residents from forceful annexation by another municipality, to maintain limited government, maintain low rates of taxation, incur no debt, and protect the rights of its citizens.
Good to me.
I love it.
Woo hoo.
That's Kingsbury.
Yep, here you, here you.
And at this point, we'll do our pledges to the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Hi, we'll do.
Roll to. All right, Commissioner Ignosik.
Here.
Commissioner Heinemeier.
Here.
Mayor Nolan.
Here. All right, we'll call our meeting to order. Um, number one, announce it. I have a whole list, so, well, it's just things and I didn't put them in any particular order, so. One of the things that we got was an open records request from Crystal Clear for anything, any text emails regarding Mr. Benavides.
Crystal Clear.
Yeah, this is a open records request for the following records, copies of any emails, letters, or texts between Joseph Benavides and City of Kingsbury staff employees, or between the City of Kingsbury staff employees themselves regarding his scheduled participation at the April 21st, 2025 City Commission Meeting and/or his actual participation at the May 19th, 2025 City Commission Meeting. Copies of any materials and/or other documents provided by Joseph Benavides to City of Kingsbury staff employees, or provided to Joseph Benavides by the City of Kingsbury staff employees with regards to his scheduled participation at the April 21st, 2025 City Commission Meeting and/or his actual presentation at the May 19th, 2025 City Commission Meeting. Please let me know if you require any clarification. Electronic copies are acceptable. Jessica, our city clerk, got right on it and said, I've created a Google Drive folder here. Gave him the link. Inside you will find a PDF with all of my email communication with Mr. Benavides, as well as screenshots of Facebook Messenger conversation and text change between myself and Mr. Benavides. I also included screenshots of any references to Mr. Benavides I could find in texts or otherwise with city attorney Sam Druigan, Mayor Shirley Nolan, or Commissioners Allison Heinemeier and Frank Ignosik. I have been Mr. Benavides's, Benavides's only point of contact with, with the Kingsbury City Government. I have not given or received any documents to from Mr. Benavides. I included the meeting minutes for our, it says October, I guess that's April. I just now realized it says October.
It was before he ran.
Okay. I've included the meeting minutes for our October 25th. I guess that would be 2024.
Oh, whoopsie.
Yeah, well.
That was an easy one to do.
A City Commission Meeting when Mr. Benavides first visited the Kingsbury City Commission. The minutes from the May 19th, 2025 meeting will be approved by the commission this coming Wednesday, but you can watch video of Mr. Benavides's presentation at the May meeting here and gave the link. Please let me know if you need anything else. And the reason I read all that is because Mr., and this is from a Mr. Snipes, yes, Mr. Robert Snipes with Crystal Clear. He's the treasurer there. And he said, thank you very much. Fastest response I've ever received to an open records request. I really appreciate it, so. So they've, they're, they've just, so FYI, so they've requested open records regarding those two meetings and. Fastest one on record. Speaking of Crystal Clear, I know we've talked about, and I had a little thing in the newsletter about the CSI, the customer service inspections.
Thank you for doing so.
Oh, well. Yeah, that was prior to me actually talking with Crystal Clear, so I got a little bit more information. So they actually have to come into your home and inspect things, making sure you don't have lead pipes and look under some sinks and stuff. Yeah, I learned that also. I was talking with Ronnie Clark, the mayor of Staples, and he was, they got kind of a group deal because they were like three or four together and got one of the inspectors there. So I did check on the three that I received, plus some family, plus the town hall, 7571. And 7571, I have one that does not need the inspection. 7571 needs the inspection. So there's no water to anything at the moment, but they do have to come in and look at sinks, hot water heaters, kind of looking for lead in pipes, the backflow preventers. They do inspection of those every year. So those are, yeah, that's there at your meter or something.
Yeah.
So that's not what this is. This is more of the checking for lead in pipes or any kind of contaminant that possibly could get into the water supply.
What happens if you don't let them in your house?
I don't know. What I mentioned is that they have done a, they have suspended the deadline that was July the 9th. They have suspended that deadline. They were going to cut off water if you did not. So they've suspended that. They have no date at this point. They said they're not turning off anybody's water. Because I did call and ask that one, so now we are on record. So we are not subject to the deadline now because we have checked on that. We still need to get an inspector, but because we did call and check before the deadline, or the previous deadline.
So if somebody doesn't call and check before the deadline?
I'm, I'm not sure. Yeah, however, they have said that they have suspended that, that deadline.
If you do not, they terminate your service.
But they have, they have suspended the deadline and they said they're not terminating anybody's service.
And I, and I read, and I may have misread it, but it, I read your thing in the newsletter that I thought there was a comment there that you looked at, or the TCEQ provision that they cite, because that's what they told me when I went over and talked to them. This is a TCEQ rule. And I thought your thing said that that TCEQ rule does not address.
I, I talked to the home office for TCEQ and then I talked to the regional director at TCEQ regarding this whole thing. Their response was, because the first wording in the letter is per TCEQ and Crystal Clear, and they're saying, we don't know anything about that. We didn't order that. However, they do have the right to do that. They said, it's kind of like a homeowners association saying, the state of Texas and the HOA require, you know, you to put a fence around your pool or whatever. So it's not that TCEQ has ordered this. It's that they have that provision that water supply companies do follow certain rules and regulations and preventative measures that they, and inspection.
That they, that they list as their rules.
Right.
Have you found a place where their rule is listed as what they're wanting to do?
No. Well, I have talked to them.
Yes.
And that's where, they did not, I think they might have actually, now that I think of it, cited a particular provision. I can call them again and get that straight and make sure I write that down.
If you want to.
I was just trying to find out if I needed inspections.
But I looked at, I looked for, because TQEC or TCEQ did not, the site they recommended to view for information doesn't, nothing. Doesn't apply. TCEQ does not apply. This doesn't apply to TCEQ.
Right.
But it could apply to Crystal Clear as an organization.
As a specialty district.
Well, I looked at their rules and regulations that they have published, and it's the same thing they sent in the link to the letter. There's nothing there. They have to give you notice, reasonable notice. They have to notify you in writing of the reason they think they need to check your house or your plumbing. There has to be a reason for it. Can't just, well, it doesn't specify what it has to be, but they have to give you the reason. And then they can inspect.
Now, one of my properties did have an inspection on file from 1998, so they said that one does not need to be inspected.
For how long?
I don't know.
Because the TQEC regulations say the Crystal Clear Water Supply Companies have to maintain that first CSI inspection that allows them to put you onto the water supply line at the very beginning. They have to maintain that for 10 years. Doesn't say what happens after 10 years.
Well, I, one of my meters, there was no meter there. This is in downtown. There was no meter.
Right.
We installed a meter. They said that one still needs to be.
They shouldn't hook it up until they've inspected it to make sure.
Yeah, well, it's not even, it's not even hooked up to anything, so they can inspect what they want, so.
And like I said, and I'm looking to see, like I said, I looked for their regulations, Crystal Clear SUD regulations, and I think 2020 was the last update I saw, and it's not in there. So I went to their meetings, minutes of their board meetings, said, well, maybe they passed this last month or two or three. Well, maybe in the last year, because that's about as far back as you go before you find a board minute meeting.
Yeah.
A board meeting minutes.
Yeah.
There's nothing listed on their website.
Well, I, and I know someone that did have a gentleman, one of the inspectors from the list, come out and, and they essentially looked under some sinks, make sure there was a cutoff. It was quick and it was no invasive inspection. They came in, looked under where the sinks were, kind of inspected that. I guess that can tell something.
Let's see what the pipes are coming in.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're looking for lead pipes is a big part of it. Not all of it, I'm sure, but a big part of it.
Why are they looking for cutoffs?
They apparently looked for a cutoff, is what I've been told. I don't know. I wasn't there, so I don't know for sure, but.
I don't know. It just makes.
I know. I am not a happy camper about somebody coming in my house, but.
No.
But I am.
I'm gonna get a bigger water tank.
There you go.
Yeah.
I mean, I could have filled one up today with the rain I've got. So I just wanted to give y'all what information I had and that at 7571, we are, according to their records, we do need an inspection there.
And you can get them.
Is that, is that something that should happen after the, after any plumbing work gets done, or?
If it's extensive, a large, like if you're adding on, adding in addition, if you're overhauling a big part of your plumbing system, yes, you're required to have a CSI done. If you're changing out, I guess, a fitting or a shut-off valve, and they don't specify, they just say in general, if you have a large amount of plumbing redone or replaced, or if you add on a large amount of plumbing, they want to inspect it. They want the inspection. But it's not, it's not specific about the definitions of what's large and it's just.
Crystal Clear wants the inspection?
Yes, that's, that's one of their policies. If, if you, if you do major, major plumbing replacement or work, they would like an inspection.
Or crime scene inspection.
But, you know, no one there should call them and tell them, I'm overhauling all my plumbing.
Yeah, right. Well, I mean, yeah, okay, interesting. There's different things. There's, there's gonna be some plumbing work over here, right?
Where?
Oh, yes, at this house?
Yeah.
There's gonna be major, major, yeah, and we're gonna have, that's, would be required to do that.
Essentially, the house was raised, so none of the plumbing reaches. So, yeah, there's got to be some plumbing work.
Yeah.
So we shouldn't get this inspection until we've done some plumbing work over there?
I don't see any reason to get inspection until we've done it.
Yeah, I can call them and see what they say specifically about if there's, if, if the site is under construction, you know, does it make sense to do the inspection or not? I'll call.
Yeah.
That's wise. I would say a wise decision, not a necessary one, or wise one.
Yeah.
Being that we've been at their mercy for some time.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like they're trying to build their own building code.
Yeah.
They're going to exercise on every construction project. They're just.
Well, it sounds like.
This is going to a big government regime.
I think TCEQ almost requires that. I think they do. They want, they want to protect the public water supply and, and the point of, easy point of access is at your house connection.
If you want to protect the public supply, you just make sure that the backflow preventer.
Yeah, I don't get that.
That's in the meter. That's it.
It just affects an individual.
It didn't used to be, but now it is in.
Yeah, I know.
And it can't hurt anybody.
I mean, if there's lead, is a backflow preventer, well, it does. It prevents anything on that side.
Water from your side will not go back into the public water supply.
Yeah. Because I specifically asked about, well, isn't this just a backflow preventer? She goes, no, we inspect those every year. This is about.
I've never seen this thing.
Yeah, I don't understand why they should be able to do that.
Same thing. And she said, I said, you're, the backflow preventer is your operation. You put it into my tap. That's part of your system. I don't have to maintain it. And she said, no, sir, this is, this is to go into your house and look at your connection to your hot water heater.
Yeah.
Which is in my bedroom. And so I'm, you know, I think it's a big government. They're moving to have a building code so that they can then come out every 10 years.
It's a 10-year cycle, yeah.
When you do a construction, and they can dictate to you how you're going to build it.
That's, yeah, that's, no.
But they start out by being general. We're just protecting the safety, but it's the end goal is this is big government.
Who is gonna mention that it is a matter, at this point was, when they had the threat they had out, it is a money generator because they're short again. You have that many inspections, you have that much.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the.
Don't even go there.
What the inspectors, you know, are required to.
That's what I can't understand. The massive, the massive.
They're still in announcements.
The massive investigation and inspection of all these water connections, they've been here for decades.
Right.
Yes.
And all of a sudden, they're now suspect because PVC's only been in use for how many years? And lead pipe is no longer manufactured after how many years?
Because we've been talking bad about them.
And, and even worse than that is, I'm supposed to call them and ask them to check and see if I have a valid, a valid permit on file? You should be calling me and telling, you, we've checked and you don't have a valid permit, or not even send me a letter because we checked and you do have a valid permit. Why should I call and ask you to check, see if I have a valid permit that you require?
You should be able to tell me without asking.
Protect anything, any of us. What it does is it's full employment for CSI inspectors. They are trying to create a market, and I guarantee you some of those CSI inspectors used to work for Crystal Clear.
Sure. Crystal Clear used to do the inspection.
There's, yeah, there's actually very few that are around. A lot of them, Barney in San Antonio and, you know, New Braunfels.
What you mentioned, Shirley, was customer service inspection. When I saw those initials, I tended to think it was a certified state inspection.
No, it's customer service inspection. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know.
Well, the first thing I thought was crime scene investigation. And it's starting to feel like I'm investigated for a crime. We're gonna investigate you. Come here.
Yeah, because we started to use acronyms. Give me the definition of your acronym, Crystal Clear Water.
Well, this is probably something to bring to the message board.
Yeah, yeah. Um, when I, I think, well, today was the deadline for Clifford Grant's compliance date. We're, we're all up on that, so I double-checked today, made sure. Election applications. So we have, that we, there was a requirement according to the uniform election dates. For November 4th election, we're required to post notice of our filing deadline. We were supposed, we had to file notice by June 20th. Jessica got that out there quite a while, quite some time ago, our notice that we have a filing deadline. So the dates of to file for an app, file for a place on the ballot are July 19th to August 18th. Well, oh, yeah, yes, sorry, yes. Yes. So we're planning on doing what we've done in the past, which is we have our mailbox with the key and I have, I have them here.
Forms.
Forms that we will then put in, you know.
Oh, did you already print the?
No, I did not. I just have the baggies. So we can print out the forms, but we don't have to do it for a month.
I mean, I wondered if I should go ahead and put the, put some application forms outside, say, at the beginning of July, but wait until a little later to put the mailbox to turn them in?
I don't know. Yeah, you can, but yeah, we can't.
Put an electronic one on the website and the PO box.
Yeah. So we're not supposed to, except until July 19th.
Yeah, I read somewhere it said if you turn it in before, before the window, it's not valid.
Oh.
Whoa, oh.
Yeah, so no point in putting the box out before the window.
Until July 19th.
But, you know, I thought if somebody wanted to pick up an application and look at it and think about it, they could, you know.
Yeah.
So.
Example, a sample. Just a sample.
And August 18th.
Before.
August 18th is the last day to order an election. So we don't need to order an election unless there is more than, yeah, unless, if all the, if contestants, if all the applicants are uncontested and, well.
You should mention it. It's myself and Allison.
That are, that are, four-year terms are up in, in November 4th. So in order to, well, typically what we've had to do is we order the election and then when we've had, we haven't had anybody, any contested races yet, so we then send a cancellation. We have to send all this to the elections office. So, so in July, we'll probably order the election. Then when we, because the last day to file is also the last day to order. So we'll go ahead and order an election. If there are no contested, no uncontested races, then, if there are no contested races, then we can cancel the order. So we'll need to have in July a.
Order the election.
Yeah, order the election. Um, let's see. This is more a note to myself. Our 941 is to payroll taxes, because there, we pay those quarterly, so next Monday is the end of the quarter, so I have to do that. We've had some questions on the GIS mapping, which is, shows the city limits. If you look at the appraisal district, the.
On their website.
Yes, on the appraisal district website. They do not show the store as being in the city limits, but it was annexed in 2023. So I called them to see where they get their mapping information. The, the person that I talked to didn't quite have the answers, so she, it was funny. She said, well, Kingsbury's not really a city. She goes, they need like a mayor, right? I said, well, yeah, they are a city. They did incorporate in 2015. So, yes, they are a city. They do have city limits.
Well, you eventually told her, right?
Eventually, at the very end, I did. Because she, it was like the third time she mentioned that Kingsbury wasn't really a city. So after that third time, I finally said, yes, ma'am, it is a city. In fact, I am the mayor and we have, we have a city council. We pass ordinances and resolutions, blah, 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 you know.
Yes, we have city limits. We have an ETJ. We are a city.
So, shit, the first, yeah.
Amazing.
I know. Well, because it's the appraisal district, so their number one purpose is appraisal of property taxes. We don't have a property tax. So I said, yes, the city of Berlin, the city of Staples, the city of Kingsbury do not have property taxes.
Right.
We're not required to have a property tax. So that's what's on their radar, property taxes.
Yeah.
And I just had a protest today, so. Um, so, so I would try, I'm still trying to get down to where they get their mapping. So she finally gave me the name of the person that would be back on this past Monday and that she would give me a call, but she didn't. So I emailed her and to see where I can get this information. So make sure that that is in the city limits and also the one that was recently annexed, that they make sure that that is. Also, talk to the Texas Controller because, to make sure that sales tax from there is going into there and that they are.
Sales tax from the store?
Yeah, is going in there and that the, even though it's a wholesaler, if they do any kind of sales tax, that, that would also be going in. So the Texas Controller got back with me really fast, so. So I'm still trying to find out. I haven't gotten a response back from the appraisal district on exactly what they're mapping, because I did explain. I mean, when people look for city limits, that's where I go, to the appraisal district, you know, to, to see, because it is by, by property and.
And because you're the one that's gonna tax it, you're the one, the appraisal district is not gonna get taxed. Set the tax.
Right.
You're the person I look to to see. Am I buying one?
Well, it's pretty wild, like, that the appraisal district has the map of our city limits, but they were trying to use it as not a city.
Over and over again.
So do you think the comptroller thing is, is taken care of?
The comptroller thing is taken care of.
Okay, great.
So that was, that was good. That was quick. Um, speaking of the pipe wholesalers, he had left me a voicemail some time ago, a couple weeks ago, and said, was wondering how it went. And so I did let him know that, yeah, it was passed in, in May. And so it is part of the city limits. I said, we're still working on how to get the mapping straight on that. So they have been notified. As we're talking about the town hall, I did work with TML to send in the estimated, yeah, insurance. So we have the house insured under, as of April 29th, something. So we are insured under TML for, for that. And last but not least, our budget cycle should be starting here pretty quick. So we have to have a budget approved by September 30th, which means we have to have a public hearing and an ordinance for the new, for the new budget. Otherwise, we can't operate. So probably this June, July, we'll go ahead and see if we can't get everything approved in August, just in case there's anything that prevents us from being able to approve a budget in August that we still have July, I mean, September to, to go ahead and do that.
We'll want a public hearing in August.
Yes, a public hearing in August.
And that needs to be in the newspaper and all that.
It needs to be in the newspaper.
One day, they're gonna change that requirement to have newspapers, you know, newspaper notices, legal notices in a newspaper, because we do provide it on the website. If you do have a website. If you do have a website, it, you're required to have it on the website.
Oh, and one, so one thing, uh, the ordinance for that May annexation, do you, uh, we need to put the ordinance under the ordinance and resolutions. Is it not there?
I already did that.
I didn't see it, maybe I didn't refresh the page enough. So, yeah, we double check on that and make sure, yeah.
Maybe I didn't have it right.
All right, so, uh, real quick, uh, the, it's kind of fuzzy, or is that me?
It's a little.
Yeah.
Hit it at home and, yeah. Um.
I don't think I did, I did that.
Okay, okay, just so, yeah. Um, so we had, okay, uh, I have to, uh, fess up here to a, my, my, area. See, you see that there is a $9,000 credit? Um, I, on a Sunday, on a Sunday evening, I realized that I had not moved any money over from Texas Class over into the checking account. So that second draw that, uh, Mr. Rurellis made bounced. And I put the money, I made the transaction, this is all my bad. I made the transaction, I called Gabriel, I let him know, he said, yeah, he was wondering about that because he, they put a hole or something on it, or he saw that it didn't go through. And so he let me know his bank, I called his bank on Monday morning, I called his bank, I called our bank, uh, just kind of making sure, I told him whatever costs he incurred from having bounced a check, I would personally pay for whatever it was, because this is all on me, it's my bad. It just totally escaped me to put the money over there. It just always seemed like we had so much money sitting over there, I guess. I guess, so, uh, luckily, he did not incur any costs, we did not incur any costs. Uh, we, Broadway, uh, where we bank, said that we may incur like a $35 NSF charge or something, which we, we did not. Uh, because I then had to call, I wouldn't have even fessed up to any of this, but, but I also had to call Jessica and let her know that, the check that I had made out to her also was, uh, made of rubber and, uh, and.
Did you have money?
Because of course, uh, uh, an A C H, uh, automated clearinghouse move, uh, money move from Texas Class to our checking account isn't instantaneous. It takes like one or two business days. So I got it going Sunday evening, but things started going through the floor. So that's what that $9,000 credit is, NSF on second draw. Um, the money did get over and all the other subsequent draws were, were, uh, good. So luckily, I didn't have to pay out of pocket for any, anybody's, uh, uh, rubber checks. So, um.
Jessica, do you have another copy of that check receipt?
Oh, I do. This one? Uh, let's see, I still continue to move things into Texas Class, but that's just, they're automatically set up to go. Um, I'm trying to think if there was anything else on here. We did get, um, uh, uh, sales tax for $3,131.04. And we did get a mixed beverage receipts, um, or a $3.87. So, um, uh, and then you see on the bottom, under the Clifford Grant subaccount, that's where the $25,000 came from. I still have that account open. It's not like a separate, it's a subaccount, so it's not like closing a checking account or something, it's just a subaccount that I opened up with the Clifford money so that if there was, uh, so we could keep that separate if need be. So there's still some in there. And then we owe, huh?
If you had to have an explanation for expenditure on a grant, it would be.
Yeah, that's, we just put all the grant money there.
Easy to follow.
Yeah. And Sam, is that, that final draw, it was, it's 10% right, do you remember how much it's?
3,000.
3,000.
It would have been, uh, 2700 or something like that, uh, but Gabriel said, uh, why don't you just make it 3,000? Cause we have to withhold 10%.
Right.
And what was that, 27,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, the last draw is the three, the retainage balance is 3,000 and we have to pay him. And I was just, well, thinking about that, we're probably coming up on.
I, I would think, I don't know, let's see, we, the first draw, he deposited them pretty quick, that was May 30th. So it was right around that time.
Well, it was the.
I mean, I can look at the, see the date of the check.
He finished on, he finished.
What day did he finish?
When we gave him the, wasn't it the 7,000?
Yes, you're right.
So that was 6 June, I think it's gonna be somewhere around, uh, the 4th of July.
Okay.
It'll be the 30 days.
And, and he'll be back to, uh.
Remove the blocking?
He, he's gonna take out the.
The felt of the tubes, yeah.
Gracing.
Yeah.
And that, he said 30 days a month, 30 days a month. I bet he's back after the 4th of July, but we could ask him, so we'll have a check ready for him.
There is a short beam that he's going to put in, there's a, there is a short piece
There is one short piece in the back porch, yeah.
Didn't get there yet.
I asked him about that and he said, I'm gonna come along and put that, but I need to get the, he needed to get the peers up to the right set.
Yeah, yeah.
And so he'll do that, he'll do that and, uh, we'll have the chance to go ahead and pay him the 3,000 retainage.
Cool. I don't think there's anything else to, um, on there. And that is the last of.
So, there was just a long list there.
I have, uh, somewhat between an announcement and a question for you guys. Um, Fall Harvest, I was, uh, looking for a link to the website to send it to somebody, but have you activated the website?
No.
Maybe we should.
Uh, it's, yeah, it is out there under the free URL.
Okay.
But we can.
Uh, or, I mean, what do you think, Jessica, you're the tech mastermind of Kingsbury. Um, should we do a big, how do you wanna do the Fall Harvest? Um, uh, do you wanna activate the website we have, or do you wanna do a page or food for thought? I mean, I don't wanna take up too much more time, announcements, but.
Uh, so like the goal being so that vendors can apply, or what, what are we?
So that people can go there for information.
Yeah, more for a landing site for information. Okay. I mean, we can do that under the Kingsbury website, or we can, you know.
So it has its own website that's not a Kingsbury website?
Right, it has its own, it has its own website. But I typically don't activate it until, and just keep it at the free, instead of paying for it all year.
Okay.
Um, cause it is a certain amount per month.
Which, I mean, we could just make a page on the web, on the Kingsbury website, I don't know if we need to do a whole different website, but.
Yeah.
Um, I just thought I'd bring it up, cause I was actually looking to find something to send to somebody and I couldn't find anything, so I thought, maybe now's the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh.
Okay.
Who was the lady that was?
Robin's gonna, Robin's putting together the, yeah, the, she's been doing work on the, the market and stuff. Um, but, yeah, I just kinda wanted to find out, like, are we doing a website, are we doing a page? Should Robin, if it's a website, she might be able to take it on, but if it's a page, maybe that's more your thing.
Um, yeah, I mean, I wonder if we should talk to Robin about that. I, um, I'm happy to make a page, um, but I, maybe she already made some kind of poster or flyer about it, I, I can't remember, I, I'm wondering what will be on the page.
Yeah, so maybe she can do the graphics and you can, to help her, you know, post it or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
She would rather have access to the one, the website that's just, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Would you be comfortable dealing with her, talking to her about this, working today?
Yeah. Yeah, I can ask her about it.
I mean, I, you know, I, it, the, the old website was great to have, but I don't know, was it really necessary and is it worth paying for? Cause I feel like a page, a big page that you could get to in a tab somehow.
Yeah, it was kinda nice to say it was kingsburyfallfest.org and.
That's true.
Yeah, um, connect domain. I was just looking to see, um, right now, we're under free plan, which you can't connect your URL, although we do, we pay for the URL. Um, so yeah, there's, now core, 17, 14, like 15 to 18 bucks a month, which is not.
Not a big amount of money.
No.
Almost $200 a year.
Um, yeah, well, we only do it like those, like about three or four months before the festival.
But that's just, that's the monthly cost, just for the time you're using it?
No, that's, that's the monthly cost right now. Now, if you, I think if you, um, order like, uh, oh, so free domain for a year, free domain, okay, that, yeah, we already did. Uh, so yeah, it's just the monthly, monthly cost, so, so you can.
Service charge.
So if we do the business one, it's normally $36 a month, right now it's 18 bucks a month. And it allows us to accept payments, which we could do, we had set up forms, you know, for vendors to put their money in, you know. So, um, or just the light one, which is 17 bucks a month, it's just, at least it's a landing page.
Okay, how much of this is moving away from city to Robin?
Yeah.
Or moving away from y'all to Robin? You know, I'm, if it, if it's, if it's gonna be hers, if she has plans and ideas that she wants to implement, I'd like to assist her, you know, the best we can.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna take it away from her. If it's hers, let her.
So maybe we could communicate.
Well, I did think it was still kind of the city's party, though.
It, I mean, it's, it is, it's always been a shared festival.
Yeah, and I know, I think we're kinda changing it, it's evolving, it's evolving. I'm not trying to change it, I'm just saying it is evolving, it's changing, things change all the time. Robin's moving in, she's not city, but she has evidently some, a desire to, you know, make this run.
Yeah, well, maybe we could communicate, would you mind, I'll send, maybe, I'll send all, I'll send you and Robin an email, uh, about the website, cause I think we need some kind of presence, um, just to start, now's the time to start getting people, vendors and people interested, so it'd be good to have a presence online.
Yeah. Yeah, it's nice to have a kingsburyfallfest.org to, to go to and. Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I, um, yes, okay.
So we just, yeah, that's, that was a good thing to bring up, yes, thank you.
Excuse me.
All right, item number two, final number two, uh, public comments or discussion? Any?
Oh, maybe we should mention that Gino passed away last month.
Yes.
Um, we did have, um, Mr. Swift, Mr. Swift passed away in April, I believe, and then Gino, Gino passed away last month.
Yeah.
And, uh, Mr. Swift's the one that gave, which gave me those, all those National Geographics from the 1920s up to, yeah, it's great to look at the Dodge Brothers Motors, you know, the cars, there were all these big touring cars, you know, with the big long hood and the little cab in the back. Um, but yeah, I have.
Gino is missed, I mean, he was one of the first people that I got to know in Kingsbury and he was a really amazing man.
Yeah, he was an amazing man.
If you were with 4H, Mr. Swift was.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Very.
Yeah.
Yes.
The program had no longer.
Big pillars of our community.
And Mr. Swift was the first person that Jennifer and I met when we moved out here in 2006, and I think we were here about three days and bought the Duncan's property and, we were here about three days and he drove up in the parking lot.
Not bashful.
And it would, no, he bellowed across the yard and, uh, so anyway, uh, we'll miss him, he was, uh, as his daughter said at the service, the, the man, the myth, the legend.
Yes.
Both, both men.
Yeah, both men, yeah.
And Gino.
Yeah, both men, absolute legends.
And they lost others as well.
Yeah.
We've lost others as well, but.
Gino was the first.
Changing of the guard.
Newspaper, wasn't it?
Yes, it was the, yeah.
Citizen profile.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes. Any other public comments or discussions?
So many things have happened, so many Bible school, Kingsbury Baptist went okay.
Yeah.
Uh, tonight, the ladies at the Lutheran church started a Bible study, I don't know how long it lasts, but, yeah, Wednesday night, I don't know how, but tonight was the first one at the Lutheran church. Methodist ladies have been meeting again on Wednesday at noon. Good eating, they all bring something. Ladies singing, sometimes they let me in, I don't understand.
You show up with a bowl and a fork.
All right.
It's in, in around town, there are many, many, it's just too many church right now.
Yeah.
And we don't wanna go with the news of yesterday. Okay.
Oh, the SWAT.
Yes, the SWAT and.
Unanswered questions, right?
Which was right on top, when you wake up at 3:30 in the morning, what is that noise? It's just a generator, but that operates the equipment that they were, that the sheriff's department.
I'm in the dark on this one, but.
Yeah. Oh, uh, yeah.
I'm in the dark on whatever.
Yeah, just a.
Oh.
Yeah, a little stand.
Christine Lane, behind the cemetery.
Um, item number three, review of public documents, area residents seeing help with E T J. I did get an email, uh, asking about a particular property, whether it was or was not, uh, annexed. Um, I, I, uh, don't have it in my list as being annexed, but I will go through the, and that's why I noticed that the, the ordinance for the last annexation was not in there, so I will go through and make sure that, uh, and get a definitive on whether that is or is not in there. Wait.
What's in there?
An ordinance for the annexation for this property that someone was asking about.
Okay.
So, yeah, the ordinance, we have the one, uh, subpage on the website that is for ordinances and resolutions.
Yeah.
That's why I noticed that the one from May was not in there yet, so, cause I was looking at, well, I was looking for this one and for the ordinance that, for the corner properties also, so that I could, I sent that to the Texas controller and sent that to the appraisal district, so.
Just somebody was asking about.
Yeah, somebody was asking if their property had been, they had done a petition and wasn't sure if it had been, uh.
Approved and.
And enacted, so.
So they want to be in city limits?
Yeah, yeah, they do.
They are, or?
Yeah. Yeah, we, there was a, yeah, they, they, I, I have to look and see for sure, you know.
We don't know, it's a blood loop deal.
This whole district, I don't know if those are right or not, because, yeah, that's why I was going back to the ordinance. Um, oh, what was, oh, yeah. Uh, I had a, the Guadalupe County Mayor's meeting was last week, met in New Berlin and, uh, the Ralph, the, the mayor of, uh, Shirts asked me, have y'all gotten any petitions to be removed from the E T J? And I'm like, no, no, we haven't. Nope, and he was like, really? I'm like, no, nobody's been requested to be removed from the Kingsbury E T J, not so far, so.
We have facilitated other people with their removal from other E T Js, but we have not received any ourselves.
Have they received some?
They've all received them.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
They're lamenting on their E T Js looking like Swiss jeans.
Wow.
Uh, not as easy to follow.
Just an aside, I read an article, uh, about, um, developers and having landowners asking for the petition to be removed from E T J so that they could sell to developers.
Yeah.
Whoa.
Uh, without any restrictions.
Yeah.
So.
It's a, it is.
It's an ongoing business. I won't say racket, but it's a business.
Yeah, there was, uh, the new, uh, mayor of Santa Clara was, that was his.
Brand new, just. He's brand new, just, just into office.
And his question was, how do you deal with developers? As best you can, because they'll sue ya. Um, so, uh.
That was the only, yeah, that was the only.
Thing of the mayor's meeting.
Regarding, um.
Although the mayor Staples did ask if we had.
Any protesters, any, uh, no Kings protesters, because they had one.
Oh, no!
Yeah, he had a picture, he had a picture of the guy, he had a little sign and everything. I was like, no, I think we're all kind of busy. I don't think there was any, any protesters, not that I saw. Um, item number four, old business consent agenda item. This is the approval of documents to wit. The May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five public hearing minutes, the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five regular city commission meeting minutes, the May twenty-sixth special meeting minutes, and the May twenty-sixth executive session minutes and notes. So, uh, any, uh, any, uh, any of these items that need to be moved to the regular agenda?
Not from this end, no.
All right, so they will stand on the consent agenda as approved. Item number five, discuss and consider the new city hall renovation update and planning. This has Allison's name, but Frank has done a wonderful drawing here. Did you tape measure at all, or did you?
I elbowed my way in to get my name.
Take measure.
Okay.
And my lovely wife.
Yes.
She told me where everything should go, and I said, well, come to a meeting and express your opinion.
Does it smell, does it smell good in there?
I can't smell.
Oh, that's right.
It smells better than it did when we first went in there.
I've put, I've put plug-ins and all over here, oh, yeah.
That's why I'm like.
Yeah.
And I'm a witness to.
Huh?
That's why electric bill is so high.
No, no.
I know, I'm kidding.
Present different measurements and so, yeah. That's all right, it's a lot of people in the act.
So, yes, this was great, and I went down and, uh, met with Jessica and Tyler this morning, and we took a look at stuff. Uh, we kind of talked about things, and we have some thoughts, if you're interested.
Yes.
Sure. Um, we were kind of looking at all the rooms, and it seemed like this corner room would be the great, the best, like clerk's office, just because there's a doorway here from the porch and from here, it's, she's the most public person that people see, so it seems like that makes the most sense.
Northwest corner.
Um, yeah.
Northwest.
Yeah. Um, yeah, it is. The entry hall, uh, I think it's great. We were talking about, like, maybe library, or maybe getting Margaret to, to curate some, like, historical photos or a combination of these things, so when, if, you know, it could be a waiting room, it could just be a place where people come in, but a great opportunity for, for something.
Sort of like a small museum.
Museum type, yeah.
Yeah.
It's already started to look that, a little bit.
Because of the three calendars.
Yeah.
I assume you put that there.
Yeah.
What'd you put on?
There's not much.
No, no.
That space doesn't have any kind of utilitarian.
Yeah, with the.
Is there any of Kingsbury calendars that the.
Yeah.
Auxiliary.
Yeah.
Kingsbury lady, or whatever, Kingsbury Volunteer Fire Department Auxiliary Calendars with historic Kingsbury pictures, I'm sorry.
So, then moving over to the big room, the thirteen by fifteen room, I mean, I think that the mayor should have a, an office, whether the mayor actually uses it or not, it's still, should be, there should be an office for the mayor in there.
Be a good, like, sitting, like, a small sitting room for small, well, or like when we have an executive session, like, you could go over there.
Or, you know, if the mayor needs to meet with people, that's a great, that would be a great space, or, you know, couches maybe, and a desk, um, some kind of general, you know, office-y type space, but with, there's room in there for, for, you know.
Yeah, it's, they're all pretty good sized rooms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, then.
Frank, did you have?
Go ahead.
So then, then it came down to the debate of which room's the meeting room, you know? Um, is it the kitchen space? Or is it the two back rooms and see if that, if we can take that wall out and, because to me, this seems, uh, the, the combo, the two rooms right behind the city clerk's room. If we could get rid of that wall, um, we'd probably have to support the roof being some of how, but it would be, be a great meeting room.
There's a chimney in there.
The chimney is there.
Yeah, which we'd have to take the chimney down, I think, on the, on the top.
It's not actually, yeah, it's only a partial chimney.
Right, because it didn't go through the roof, it's the other one.
Well, it was for a wood burning stove, not a fireplace, so.
So we'd have to, yeah, figure the chimney out, but that's my suggestion. Um, otherwise, it would be the other room, but since the other room has the kitchen in it, it seems like this is more like break area. Also, um, uh, in mind, being mindful of a heating and cooling space, I think the meeting room, um, especially if we took the wall out, that's, you know, that would be someplace that could also be a dual, dual-use space for heating and cooling space in times of emergencies and the, um, the other big room with the kitchen in it. So maybe upgrade the kitchen, but I like it just simple, small, what do we need? Maybe coffee or, you know, we don't really need to do too much in there.
I'm, I'm in favor of like, I'd be happy to remove the kitchen entirely. We have a counter with a microwave, a toaster oven, and, and a coffee maker, and that's kind of it.
Mm-hmm.
It's an office building, it's not a residence.
So what I would have done is, as an owner of this house, is I would have eliminated kitchen, kitchen, as somebody living there, it made sense. As an office space, no, you put the bar or a sink and so on on the back porch, as well as the bathroom, which was never part of the original house, I would remove where the bathroom was, move it out to the porch, open up the wall there for one big meeting room on the south side of the house.
That's, that's one of my, one of my concerns is where a bathroom is going to go, because basically, we're going to gut all the plumbing that's underneath there.
Yeah, because it was originally an outhouse, so the bathroom was, was kind of an outhouse.
If I have my wishes sometime in the next decade, I'd like to see a composting toilet.
Yeah, me too.
As the bathroom for this building.
Which you could do if you made the back porch into two bathrooms, and one is right off the meeting room there, and then the other one's off of.
Yeah, because you have.
Truthfully, I'd just leave the back, I'd take everything, all the glass walls off the back porch and make it a porch.
Yeah.
Because I think it faces, faces.
I can't even tell you what kind of wall is there right now.
Windows and doors, glass mostly.
Well, there's two doors on the side, yeah.
But it's mostly cobbled up. Yeah.
Yeah, on the, on the side part, but the whole back wall, I can't.
Windows and doors been cobbled together to make.
Well, I think we're going to need more than, maybe.
You're going to need an ADA red.
Service, but, so maybe that whole half of the, where the kitchen is, just that whole.
Yeah.
Section, maybe.
ADA compliance.
But I love the idea of composting water assist, composting toilets, and now that they've raised that, the house, you can tuck them right underneath.
Yeah.
But instead of. Taking that.
Exactly, yeah, that is going to be a consideration.
The smallest, the smallest space I can find for an eighty-eight half bath, sink and a toilet, uh, is about six by six, which is almost what that scale square is.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to take up a surprisingly large amount of room.
That's a five by six and located in a bad place to be.
Here's the back wall of that porch. Okay. Yeah, see, I really hadn't noticed before.
But if, if you take all the walls, the doors, the windows off of it, it's a porch, it's a nice porch.
It was a screened porch when I'm.
And it faces the backyard, once moved the propane tank out of the way, I can, I can envision, it's just about forty feet out there, is a pavilion with a concrete slab and some picnic tables, and it would be a beautiful outdoor space for meetings or.
Yeah.
Parties or whatever else the community might need.
Um, I, I taught, oh, and I was also talking with, uh, Ronnie Clark, uh, from Staples, and they have that, they converted Old Schoolhouse. And they actually had a, a wealthy benefactor that, uh, provided the money, and they created a committee to renovate that old schoolhouse. It, it was kind of falling in kind of thing.
You know, Tyler.
Instead of, instead of making decisions in here, should we like, you know, kind, I, I don't know if we need to make a committee, but should we like have some ongoing meetings?
I'd like that.
Yeah.
Well, and also.
Where we can, like, just really discuss in the space, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I would love that, and I, I also, uh, would love to maybe get established either a weekly or a monthly, uh, volunteer day where, you know, we, and, and, you know, and it's going to be important for us to, like, really get our plan together so that we can be great leaders for volunteers. I mean, I have tons of experience doing that, I'm sure you guys do too with the Lions Club and your mayor, so. Um, and Tyler and Jess, you know, I think there's a bu, there's a bunch of really great talented people in Kingsbury, so it's going to be exciting.
If you go to old ways of doing things, not so much old, because it's also new, Seguin currently did in Central Park, they finally realized, we do not have a public restroom, they put one in Central Park.
Let me just.
You don't put, you don't have to have the ADA restroom in the building.
No.
It can be a separate thing by itself, because of the requirements of space and so on, sometimes it makes more sense. And if you're going to have a outside area to be used, oh, you have, you don't have to open the main building, or you have to open this to rest.
Let me, let me bring a couple of things up, just ideas, just thoughts. This, what you call the mayor's office corner, I mean, I'm not all enthusiastic about the mayor having a separate office. I'd like the mayor's papers, notes, everything to be stored in the building, but I think in the clerk's office, there's going to be, that's a lot of, that's thirteen by thirteen room. That's a pretty good size room.
There's enough room for desks and storage.
You could put, two, we could put two desks in there.
Mm-hmm.
Two completely separate offices, but my main thing is, instead of you carrying so much around with you, have it in, in, you know, in the repository.
Yeah.
Uh, but this, this mayor's office room, thirteen by fifteen, if we put one large table, like this one, and make room for Sam at it also, uh, we could, if we had nothing but chairs in here, we could.
Have a group.
We will never use all the chairs, well, we might, once in a while, use all the chairs for a meeting. That would be a, a good size meeting room, it's, uh.
As it is, yeah.
It's a good size room.
It'd be great, yeah, but I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, we're, and thi, but this one, we could put a meeting table there, and, um, we could put tables and chairs like this, at, at a cost, but we could go back and we could do almost this size of room.
Yeah.
Almost.
Well, we, we did in the dance hall, you know, uh, uh, tables and nice chairs from.
Right.
Uh, those were purchased from Sam's.
Reasonable.
Yeah, very reasonable, very reasonable.
If, but this, and this, these two rooms on the back, if we take that wall out and take the chimney down, believe it or not, this space is the same as that space.
Yeah. In overall, or cube, or square footage.
And I don't, I don't know if there's a benefit to having large spaces, I'm thinking in terms of, if we have like a, another freeze, uh, where people are needing a shelter overnight, maybe, uh, or something like that, emergency situation, if a large space would be beneficial or opposed to small spaces, I don't know.
Because you have to separate people generally by age or something, it's nice to have.
Leaving, leaving walls in place where we can, it's going to be cheaper and easier and safer than taking a wall out and making this big space unless we really had the need for the space.
To use.
You know, we could probably, we could probably do our whole, our whole.
Correct. Rooms versus one meeting room, though, that sounds gorgeous.
Like I said, we could probably do our whole city need right here, in this, this half, like, first third of the house.
Yeah.
And the rest of it could just be empty.
Yeah, just additional.
Very little would we need.
Additional.
And we could.
Committee rooms, meeting rooms.
We could put a wall there, or a wall here, squeeze in a bathroom, and a little kitchenette, and would be, would be good.
Well, I want to, maybe we should go back to Shirley's idea of this, you know, meeting in the space.
I'd like that.
Yeah.
And really hashing some things out.
Maybe, maybe for the time being at least, maybe like a regular meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Once a month, and biweekly, whatever, you know?
Yeah, I think, I mean, the sooner we get on it, the better, yeah.
I think biweekly right now would be good.
I don't know what resources might be available, someone to climb up into the attic and, uh, look at our roof framing and make sure. I think it's probably adequate, it seems like it's been adequate for a hundred years or more.
And we may want, you know.
Because the roof, that should be, I think it should be our next big expenditure, is replacing the roof, all the metal.
If need be.
If need be.
I want to say, I want to say.
I mean, because.
I've had it painted twice.
Good shape.
But.
But I, go ahead.
I've had it painted twice, yes. My understanding in old structures like that, even with the painting, you will have leaks because of the expansion and contraction and the fact that the lead off the nails is removed, and that's part of the advantage of having the, oh, what kind of paint is it, anyway, that I had done and I've.
The, well, I was thinking that white, we have that super white stuff on ours, it's a reflective paint that just ten degrees down.
Yeah, not only reflective, but it also has, uh.
Anyway, yeah.
If we have no leaks, I guess we could salvage it and say, but eventually, rainwater collection.
If we were.
We can probably, oh, well, anyway.
If we were to meet every couple of weeks, like.
You're right about rainwater collection.
Any particular day or night or.
I'm, I'm easy.
Um.
Well, no, Thursday nights are not good.
Thursday nights are not good.
And Monday nights are not good.
Monday nights are not good.
Right, is this, but we meet on, we meet on Mondays.
We usually.
We meet on Mondays.
So Mondays and Thursdays are not good nights for me.
Okay, Mondays and Thursdays?
Yeah, Thursdays and the weekends are not good for me.
Okay. So Tuesday or Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay.
Biweekly?
Every other week.
Every other Tuesday, starting when? Uh, now, next Tuesday is the first, July first.
Uh, man, I know the first week of July, I'm not going to be, it's not going to be good at all.
Yeah.
So.
So it starts the eighth?
Where's my calendar?
I, I don't, I can't commit to it, I think maybe, but a week after that would be great.
Fifteenth?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, July fifteenth?
Will we be calling that a workshop and, uh, and is that?
I could meet the week before if people, anybody wants to, that, or we should probably all have an opinion on it, right?
Yeah, as many people, as many.
Yeah, as many people.
As many, many people could show up and, and input, uh, we're not experts.
Yeah.
Okay, so, July fifteenth is the start?
Yeah, we can call it the, you know, a committee, you know, this is the, the, the town hall renovation committee meeting, committee.
Okay. Um, what time?
I'm wondering about live streaming and stuff like that.
No.
Do we need it for committees, or are we?
I mean, if we call it a committee?
I would, let's call it a workshop.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, live streaming it.
You don't have to.
This is only business pertaining to.
If someone has a comment, I'd rather have them there on the premises.
Yeah, come down.
Yeah, come down.
Okay.
Comment, lend a hand. Uh, what time?
So this is a workshop, is that what we're going with?
Yeah, renovation workshop.
Yeah, workshop, I like it, that makes more sense. Um, biweekly, starting on the fifteenth, at what time?
Has to be after work hours, so. Six, six-thirty?
Six.
Six.
Six. Is that going to be confusing for us?
No.
No, okay.
All right, and that's every two weeks?
You're a smart chick. Frank's a smart dude. We'll figure it out. Okay, perfect.
If I get a text or an email telling me it's.
And I love, thank you so much for this, this really helps to visualize. That is really helpful, yeah.
Well, I just, all I know is, I don't know where anything's going to go. I know, I think the most, besides a meeting room for meetings, we need definitely.
Yeah.
And how much room you need depends mostly, not much.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Jessica's office probably the most, one of the most used and important things in terms of, you know, what goes where and what works for.
And security.
And after that, it's like, I need to know where the bathroom's gonna go. I don't wanna, I don't wanna plum, run, run plumbing all over the place to just have one spot, yeah.
Do you think that the bathroom, where do you think the bathroom should be?
I, I don't even wanna guess until I know where everything else is gonna be.
Let's get there and let's walk, if we do want composting toilets, which I think we could easily achieve, um, and I think there might, we might wanna consider having two bathrooms. What if we have, I mean, I don't know, let's talk about that.
We need two bathrooms or are we?
Well, I've seen composting toilets rated for the uses per day and some of them go up to a thousand, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, maybe it's, cause if we're gonna do that, we should walk around and see where it would fit underneath the.
Yeah, I was taking.
In a workshop, I would say.
Pictures today of dimensions.
Anybody else does?
Outside one, outside one, yeah, yeah.
Well, and we're gonna need to make sure the bathroom is ADA.
Yeah.
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 That's a matter of floor space and distance between fixtures.
Yeah.
So that's about, about as small as you can get. You need a radius, wheelchair turning radius between.
Yeah.
Doorway and, and turning radius, yeah, yeah, and, and bars, but.
Mm-hmm. Which nice about most of those walls are solid wood planks. I didn't know.
All of them are.
Yeah, I think it'll, I think walking run space, I think it help, it'll, it'll help kind of.
Visualize.
Visualize better and we can kind of figure out the, the, what we need to do. And I've already started like a project management part. But y'all done more than that, so excellent, yay. All right, item number six, this is a good prob.
Good problem to have, good problem to ask.
Item number six, discuss and consider options to ban or restrict heavy industry within Kingsbury City. Limits any TJ possibly through zoning ordinance.
I'm on this, but you actually sent that, that one, which I thought was very, I couldn't really make my way through it.
It's long.
Yeah, and it seemed, I kinda like clarity, I mean, can we do something super simple?
It's a lot of.
Do we have to put all these weird words in there?
I don't think you can do it.
It does have a lot of, of, yeah, like legalese type word. Now, one thing, uh, uh, again, Mr. Clark from Staples was showing me this Kingsbury Estates, you know, their, their whole thing that they've set out. And they're gonna have a onsite sewage plant there. That's the, that's on twenty, that's the nine hundred and twenty homes that are gonna be put on like two hundred and forty acres there. And it's just outside their ETJ.
Oh, twenty, right up.
Yeah. And then, right now, if you saw, there's a data center that they're trying to put in, or they probably will put in.
In San Marcos?
Uh, yeah, kind of near Redwood.
I mean, we're gonna.
Unincorporated.
Power outages, like why, do we really need robots to rule the world, what?
There's a significant amount of noise that comes from. Wouldn't have thought that, but that's what, yeah.
Yeah, a little bit tremendous vibration.
Yeah, and they're fighting it.
How far away is that?
Redwood?
Redwood.
Yeah, it's closer than San Marcos, yeah.
It was just right outside of San Marcos.
Yeah.
Nineteen seventy-eight? From the market road.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's something that, not that, as we've discussed, not that everything you put in place will prevent what you want to prevent, but if you have nothing, you're, there's nothing to, to help.
Argue with to help, to help them.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely creeping closer, yeah, and that one from, that I just changed the word Staples to Kingsbury and kinda cut out some other stuff, yeah, it's pretty, uh, is probably very conclusive, I gue- I would say. You know, very, uh, it covers, you know, all the bases.
You're trying to cover for every possibility.
Covers all the bases, uh, but yeah, it is a hard slog to, to work your way through and understand everything in, in the, in the language, you know, that is. Um, uh, but I can't say that I understand it all completely, but I do understand that I think it probably, at least for them, this is their ordinance. It has satisfied, you know, what they have had to go through with different.
Do you feel, do they feel like it's giving them some relief from, or some?
Yeah.
Protection that they were looking for?
Absolutely, it's, it's, the first one that, you know, came in was they were gonna put, basically doubled their population on a small, you know, and their city limits only went through like a corner bit, but it gave them the opportunity to, to be.
Pushed back.
To, uh, push back or at least be part of the discussion, so, yeah, absolutely. Um.
Well, is it the data center that you're talking about in Redwood, does that impact directly on Staples?
No.
It's just, uh, when they.
No, it's just one of those, it was, it's just part of the news cycle of this data center going in, in a sparsely populated area.
It's gonna impact our power, you know, we'll see, we'll see it, we'll, we'll feel it, I'm sure.
Yes, and, but I would think that would be in the ET, well, I don't know whether it's in the ETJ.
I would think it would be in the ETJ, but it's, it's, uh, I don't know for sure.
Yeah.
Well, part of the.
Hayes County or.
Yeah, you went back to, uh, the, the different people asking about if you wanna get out of ETJs and that would be part of it, to be able to sell to these developers.
Mm-hmm.
Hayes County, I'm sorry, on the network news or whatever, Hayes County has a problem, transparency problem.
Oh, we don't.
No, but that's.
We don't.
That, that was just on tonight, I, I don't watch all the news or whatever, but, yeah.
Well, there's, I mean, that's a lot of money changing hands, I'm sure, I'm sure those.
What's kind of our next step in pursuing this?
Um, I think if, if we can determine that the, that the ordinance that Staples had designed, I, I took out some words, I don't know if you took me, if it showed up in the one where it took out like for our morals or something, um, I eliminated that part. Um, that, that would at least service us initially, I mean, anything can be, you know, updated and so.
Do you think we could do a zoning ordinance that restricts only heavy industry?
That's what I'd like to see, yeah.
Not defining heavy industry yet, but just.
Is a data center heavy industry?
Well, see, that's, that's part of.
Matter of definition.
All those definitions that.
Well, then, let's define it as heavy industry.
Well, I mean, I don't.
Cause it is, it's heavy noise industry, anything that impacts the noise.
Level.
Level, the, yeah, the, the.
Quiet enjoyment.
The quiet enjoyment.
Right, wasn't that what it was?
Staples though, that, the Staples one that I looked at a few months ago that you sent me, and that's what you're talking about, right Shirley?
Yes.
That you're working on. And I, I think that there was about ten or fifteen or twenty pages.
Yeah.
Of the ninety-eight pages are just definitions.
Definitions, yeah.
That we're going to.
This is what a golf course is, this is what a mini golf course is, this is.
So you, that, that, what, your question Frank is, that you can start cutting things out of there if you, if you wanna say, well, we're not, we're not gonna do a hair salon.
Well, and all it is is a definition, it's not saying whether they can or cannot, it's just a definition.
But that's what you're choosing to regulate afterward, right?
Yeah, well, it is, but, but it's not saying that you can't have a. It's just saying, here's what a putt putt golf court is.
I don't wanna have to define a putt putt golf, I wanna define heavy industry.
More general.
Heavy industry and say, okay, this is what we're not gonna permit.
That's what I think too, yeah, I agree.
And, and like I said, hair salon, hair salon, is that heavy industry? No, it's not, here's our definition of heavy industry, which is gonna be a pretty long definition evidently, but, so your hair salon is fine, we don't care. Putt putt, we don't care, car wash, we don't care, uh, another, uh, sweepstakes, online gambling den, so to speak, we don't care.
Mm-hmm.
You know? I mean, if that's what you wanna try to stop, I'm, I'm.
I, I don't wanna try to start putting rules on people, I just wanna, I think that, yeah, the least zoning possible, I think we need to make clear heavy industry.
Which includes data centers.
I mean, that's heavy industry because it's, you know.
Not by name, but by what their output is.
Yeah, it's a, it's a heavy use of power, it's, I mean, it's, it's the, you know, they could cause power outages in our area and they also pollute the water.
Maybe it's, maybe it's, the wording is defined like that.
That's not considered environmental issues?
More than.
Air and water?
Yeah, air, yeah, something that, yes, something about.
Light, about noise, about air, about water.
Yep.
Like pollution.
That's what we define as.
Dust, well, dust with the air.
So then.
That's what we, we could.
Maybe we need to figure out what that is and how to word it.
But, you know, Allison raises a good question, I mean, you're talking about heavy industry, well, again, we get back to definitions, but are you talking about, yes, data plants and refineries and all that stuff, obviously, but what about, what about Walmart?
What about?
What about Walmart with the parking?
Yeah, the parking.
You wouldn't consider that.
The water runoff?
That's not considered heavy industry.
That wouldn't be considered heavy industry.
With, with the number of lights and.
Well, that's what we're saying, maybe is not, we don't define heavy industry, what we're defining is any kind of development uh, where there's a certain level of.
Impacts.
Of light pollution, noise pollution, water usage, you know.
But then, then you branched out from heavy industry to all industries, we're just looking at your noise, your light, your sound, your whatever. Now, we don't care, if your hair salon has too many lights on at night, no, it has to meet the same requirements we set for heavy industries.
But, heavy industry would be thrown out instantly if you had those other things, because they are gonna be vi- in violation of every one of those.
Not necessarily. Probabilities, and I have to work on probability.
And you have to think about large, like a huge, uh, distillery, and not just a wholesaler, but a distillery operating, because if, once you get big enough, then you've got sludge.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And are you, and so where, I think zoning and the way that Staples do it, you don't say that they can't come be here, it's just that if you're going to produce.
You gotta be responsible for your own.
Sludge in making whiskey, which I love, I just can't. But if, if you're going to do it, you have to treat, you have to have special treatment.
Yes, be responsible.
You put those sludge beds and, and take all of the, uh, hops and everything else and put it out there on a sludge bed, let it dry, turn it into compost instead of dumping it into the creek or the street going down by. That's the kind of thing you can regulate, but.
In terms of just that specific example, because it's come up before, the sludge that a gen- industry might generate, they can't just dump it into the creek. And they can't do that now because of TCEQ.
Well, I, I think theoretically, theoretically, but I, I would not agree with you that TCEQ does take an interest in that. They don't have enough inspectors to be aware of every business dumping into cottonwood creek out here, for instance. Uh, they're not, TCEQ does not have enough people to do that. They don't even have enough people to go measure the air in Luling for petroleum. And so there are some things that I just think through, i- it's just practicality, the state can't afford to, to regulate those kinds of things. But that's because it's so huge, we are a small area.
Yeah.
We can do more than TCE.
Keep our neighbors, keep our neighbors responsible.
Why, why can't I call TQ, TCEQ and complain about this, this place has dumped a sludge into the creek? And the creek runs right past my place and, you know, my cattle drink from that water and they're just destroying it and the fish are floating belly up. And what are y'all gonna do about it? They said, well, we'll try to send somebody out, and I said, okay, call you tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day.
Yes, that's right.
What, I mean, okay, I wanna ask for a grant, that I can go enforce the law for you, all right? You know, and I'll have to hire a lawyer, so I need money for that too, but you've got money, you don't have people, you got money, let me have. Why are you there, why are they there if not? What, what is TCEQ there for? If they can't enforce it, if they can't do anything about it?
Yeah, but I mean, Kingsbury was founded to protect the people of Kingsbury, that's exactly why we did this, to protect us from Seguin. But also if TCEQ is not getting their job done, then we can also enforce the protection of the people of Kingsbury.
But we weren't here to enforce, to protect, we're not here to protect the people of Kingsbury.
I, I thought that's what this whole conversation was about, with this heavy industry.
This is, this is protect, this is protecting our community.
Yeah.
All right, I have, I have a really hard time with, uh, the zoning thing, I'm.
I do too.
I'm not, I'm not for it at all.
But I think Shirley has a good point.
Yes.
And we see these things come popping up all around us.
I go, I go back and forth, I go back and forth, do I want it next to me? No.
Coming away?
Um, if I'm moving out because they're buying my stuff, do I care? I'm sorry for the people that are there, but they'll get used to it. The property I leave behind when I die, I have no control over. The people who inherit it don't have the interest or the love for it that I do. They're gonna, they're gonna value it totally differently than I do. The people who buy it after me, totally different value. And like I said, yeah, I, like I said, I vacillate back and forth. Does, the idea of zoning is, is valid, I like it, no, I don't want that in my neighborhood.
And then zoning, again, is not set in stone.
I know it's not, nothing is, but I don't. Yeah, if somebody wants, they wanna buy my property, first thing I wanna do is have to come to, come to y'all and say, I'd like a variance on my zoning because I'm gonna sell my property and they want, and go around and around and how long it takes, eventually, I wanna say eventually, it seems like most people get their variance. Not here maybe, but in other places, um, things seem weighted in that favor, but, uh, the only thing that really would stop it is because I don't wanna sell to a company that's gonna do that with that property that I own. You know, even if I wanna, if I wanna sell it, I don't wanna be here anymore, I don't hate it, no, I like it to stay like it is. But, so would I sell, you know, we've talked about, Janet and I talked, so why don't we just build six, eight houses on here and we can collect rent for the rest of our lives and go live wherever you want to, because there'll be plenty of money? No, we came out here to not have neighbors right over our fence. Like I said, we don't hear what they're talking about, we don't smell what they're cooking for supper, um, we hear their dogs barking once in a while, but it's. We didn't, we didn't move out here to have neighbors like that, we didn't move out here to have a junkyard right behind us. We didn't, we didn't want a, a brewery right down the street, no, we didn't, so would we put one there? No, would we sell the soil that has, no, I'm counting on my neighbors to do the same thing. The neighborhood, it's like, we were like a bedroom community, kinda, but not really, but kinda, but look at our community, look at our community, our suburbs. Our suburbs are, well, downtown, once you get past that one street, it's kinda like suburban America. And you come out here, where I live, where you live, and it's not, it's not like suburban America, but it is just like a bigger scale, kinda. I mean, we don't have the picket fences, we got barbed wire fence and you, grass and then trees, but it's, it's a yard after yard, but they're acres, not just little lots. It's a different scale, but it's still our neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know, it's, it's a struggle for me, but right now, I'm on the side of, yeah, zoning would be good, but I want it to work, you know?
I'd like to see maybe a simplification of the, the big, big old list.
I think so, I think so, let me, let me.
Cut and paste, we'll approve it.
Yeah.
And then we'll see what we have to deal with when it comes up.
Okay.
And adjust from there.
Yeah.
And you know, also Shirley, you know, um, when you're doing it.
Go for it and.
This mission statement is a great guidepost.
That is a great guidepost, yes.
It's like, how do we zone with this as a mission statement?
As our, as our guide, as our.
If everybody, if everybody down my street agrees that that's a good thing to do, there's no need for, well, there's no need for an ordinance, but it does help.
Yeah.
Re- reinforce the idea that you said, you know, you weren't gonna sell to people like that, oh yeah, I did, but you know.
Showed me a big bag of money.
Yeah.
Let's make Kingsbury a place where we can grow old and our children can grow up, I mean, that's my feeling.
Okay, and, and right now, the way the wording is, it, you can't really communicate to others.
Yeah.
What's, what it's trying to.
Accomplish.
Yeah, the individual items in it, you can't really communicate all that to, to people. So I think it, it just does, it needs a simplification to it, but without losing, um.
See, out there.
Effectiveness.
Protectiveness.
YouTube world, there we go.
Protectiveness.
Yeah, if you have an interest or an opinion about this zoning thing, do you want, do you want a, a, a big industrial thing next door to you? Even if next door is thirty acres away, um, or do you want a Walmart or a Dollar General?
Yeah.
Or is there a difference? Or do you wanna be, keep things kinda the way they are, a nice peaceful little community? Speak up, come to a meeting.
Yeah, tell us what you.
Come to a meeting, please.
Yeah.
Tell us.
Even the new renovation workshop, you're welcome.
Yes, absolutely.
Good luck.
Just remember, not too many of it one time.
I mean, it's, it, it, there's nothing I have any say, but it bugs me right now, I come over and I see the lights of that Buc-Ee's.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and it's fifteen miles away and I see the lights at that Buc-Ee's.
It's so annoying. It's so much light pollution.
Yeah, and so the. Yeah, and so, the thought is, anything, you know, lighting that up near, nearer to me is, yeah.
Well, I get irritated from all the neighbors that have security lights.
Yeah, no, why do you, why do you have all these security lights out here? Yeah, I'm the same way, okay, so, simplify, simplify, kiss, the kiss simple.
Kiss, kiss.
Keep it simple, stupid.
I'm going with the other S.
Item number seven, discuss and consider of City of Kingsbury Audit Update. Jessica and I have been haphazardly trying to get together, you know, items for Bonnie, I've talked to Bonnie about, you know, exactly what we need, you know, receipts versus invoices, she's like, whatever you got, good, okay, we can do that. We have a meeting with Bonnie, uh, she has reviewed everything so far, so she's done the work, she just needs, you know, some of the receipts.
In the timeframe that she was asked to do.
Yeah, yeah, and again, we're only looking for last fiscal year, so September, uh, October 1st, 2023 to September 30th, 2024, because the current, we're not trying to do it in, in
After.
Uh, so, we have, Jessica and I have a meeting with Bonnie tomorrow at 11:30. And it, it's just Jessica and I
We didn't post it, so
Coming up with paperwork.
So, yeah, just coming up with the, we're, just for us to try and see
Find out exactly what she needs.
Yeah, and we can, a lot of it is online, we can pull it up and, you know, print it out if we need to.
So, we're meeting in the office tomorrow.
Uh, for the audit update, yes.
Charlene Ramos says we need a gas station here, and Marie Valdez says, agree, Charlene.
Yep.
Is it okay next door to your house?
Patrick says the same thing, if anybody cares.
Is it okay, is it okay next door to your house?
Oh, oh, oh!
Well, we, we
Sorry, back to announcements, we have a food truck in Kingsbury, and you actually meet people there, Patrick.
If it was on Highway 90, that's kinda like a business area already, and it's a state highway, so
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, I've looked into, you can get a small run gas pumps that you don't need a, a Valero or something.
You don't need a convenience store attached.
Amen.
No, but however, you do require, and this is above ground and everything, but you do require, uh, large barriers around it.
Right, for runoff.
And you, no, no, you need, to keep people from hitting, yeah, yeah, to
Having the
And it needs to be like not near other buildings, so, I mean, I looked at my property downtown to see if, you know, but I would need to put in big metal barriers around everything, and I'm like, I don't want it near wooden buildings that I have downtown.
So, what was your
Oh, I, I probably wouldn't have enough room anyway, but I was looking at it.
Yeah, I know, it's
But that's not heavy industry either, I think, in answer to their question, so I don't think
But it's, it's a toe in the door, it's a camel's nose in the tin. It is, it is.
The camel's nose in the tin.
Well, I know, unfortunately, I think there's a lot of problems with even getting, luring a guy
Yeah, because all the
If it's on Highway 90, if it's downtown, I don't mind it, it doesn't, it doesn't feel out of place to me, I don't want it
I mean, there used to be gas pumps right there on Railway Street, there were, there were gas stations right there on Railway Street in the old
Gina's had gas pumps.
Yeah, Gina's had gas pumps when I was growing up, the old store has gas pumps.
The old store, and it, the old store got to maintain, and it was above ground because of the fire station, to supply the fire station.
So, yeah, we would all, we would all like a gas station.
Can you do an above-ground gas tank?
Yes, yes.
Yes, you can.
Gosh, yes.
Farm is definitely
That's what I was looking into, but you need these big barriers to prevent people from
Hitting it.
Accidentally, you know, running into it, so, I mean, we're talking large metal pipe, iron pipes.
They'll still figure out a way to do it.
I know, probably will, um, you know, or, you know, access it, you know, without paying or whatever. All the, all the tanks that have existed in Kingsbury have all been filled in.
Yes.
You know, so it would be an above-ground, it would be, I mean, if somebody has the property and the space to do it
Please tell us.
I mean, I wonder if
But, and you know, they need the traffic.
Gina's place would be ideal, it wasn't a gas station, it already has the concrete.
Again, the area that there
But if you did it above ground.
Yeah, but it's, there's no space above ground.
Building is property. There's no place to put
And where all the baker's properties are.
Yes, the baker's would have the option, because they have the space there, the railcars could even be used as
Yeah.
We aren't gonna give two individual names and so on.
Anyway, okay, enough, enough, we're never gonna get out of here, is it midnight?
Yeah, I know. Item number eight, discuss and consider emergency planning and resources.
Were we done with the audit thing?
Yeah, were we done with the audit thing?
Y'all are meeting with Bonnie.
We're meeting tomorrow, yeah.
And you mentioned the second that's on here is to ask about another, no, you didn't, I'm sorry, when I read it outside prior, I thought you were setting up
Emergency planning and resources, um, I, I finished updating the kinda disaster kinda recovery plan. One of the things that I did, except for the maps, I still need to just put some maps in there. One of the things that I had added that I just completed, uh, the, the last part was the cyber attack. And small cities, or cities are like the, like one of the number one targets these days by, by cyber attacks. And, yeah, we are a small city, so it makes us a smaller target, however, it also makes us more vulnerable, because we don't have a lot in place. And so, there were some things that I identified, or that I, that I found that are good things to have, like two, two-factor authentication on everything that we have, and making sure that we have backups and all that kinda stuff, so there's some things that probably you and I need to talk over and make sure that, just that we are, and then who has access to what, and make sure that we, we tighten things up a little bit. Cause, yeah, we are a small target, however, we're an easier target, yeah. Uh, the other thing, no, so, oh, and then, gosh, I wish I had printed out. One of the other things that I had put in his notes, and I was like, well, you know, this is probably a really good thing, is a, a chain of communication. So, if something were to happen, we need kind of a chain of communication, so I'm, I'm working, I'm 90% done with this thing, but then I started going back, and I'm like, oh, I, yeah, have this in here, because I thought it was important, so, uh, is, is getting alerts to each other, you know, in a orderly fashion, you know, or in a way that, that would work, and so, I'm gonna try and get something in there that I think will
Work?
Will, yeah, will work for that, so, um, so, I'll have something done before next, 95% done.
Something tangible.
Yeah, something tangible, well, I could print it out now and have it tangible for you, but, but there's no maps, there's no maps in it, so, so, I mean, things like you know, like, uh, if there was a chemical spill of something, either for railroad or the highway, you know, here are the most vulnerable spots, and, you know, flooding, as we've seen in March.
Thank you.
Um, item number nine, discuss and consider interlocal agreement or subdivision regulation update, and I have no updates on that, I'm sorry.
It's okay. They just, they just updated their regulation.
Yeah, I saw that, yes, that is a, that is a note that
It was a long and wonderful journey, friends.
Frank did set, send out a link that, where the county has done some
I think she sent out the link.
Yeah, did you send out the link, where?
A subdivision
Subdivision.
New subdivision regulations.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
So, I clicked on it, but I didn't get time to really kinda
I didn't really look at it much, it was just like, ah, maybe we need
Download it.
Thank you for the viewing, and she says adjourn, we may actually
At this point, we do adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.